Good evening. For the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we are being audio and video recorded this evening. We have a variance request for 56 Priscilla Ave, scheduled for 7:00 PM. Is the applicant here? Come on down. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read into public notice. In. Go right ahead.
The notice of public hearing for guaranteed builders and developers at 7:08 PM for a variance pursuit of MGL Chapter 48, Section 10 as amended in Section 5, F5A of the Norfolk zoning bylaws, to allow the construction of a 20 by 24 garage which will be closer to the side and rear setback lines than a distance equal to the height of such accessory building. The property is located at 56 Priscilla Ave, this is map four, block 13, block 28, in the R2 zoning district.
Thank you, Chris. Do you have the application?
Yes.
Right here.
I'm not the only one who has it.
Right here.
No, it's in this packet right here.
To this one?
Yeah, it's flipped down a couple pages. Keep flipping. So flip, flip one more.
Right there we go. Okay. Oh, it's hiding on this. All right. On the criteria worksheets, the next page. Okay, sir. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Bill Pibas. I'm the permit coordinator for guaranteed builders. As stated in the application, we're looking for some side lot relief for the building and...
Side block relief.
As stated, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And the hardships primarily are the location of the septic system and the existing house with its appendages. As stated, we want to construct a two-story, 20 by 24, two-car garage with a one door, one overhead door in the front. The stairs for the second floor are located inside the building and are protected from the weather as they are in the insides. We're looking for a side back relief. The proposed building is five feet from the lot line, so we're looking for a 20-foot relief there. The rear lot is located, I think, about 18 feet from the rear lot, and we're looking for a relief basically of seven feet to conform to the building code. As stated, you have some lot locations on the plan that was submitted to you. Also, I think the building itself, the plans are located for you on... As stated, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot to begin with. There is a single-family dwelling on the property, and there is basically one area that we can locate the particular garage on. As stated, it's a fairly small lot. It is kind of located within the perimeters of the setback, but the relief needs to be for this proposed garage. There is no garage on the property as it exists, and the owners would like to get their vehicles out of the weather.
Okay, thank you. Let's open up questions from the board.
Since I don't see a plot plan of the abutting lot, is there a structure on that lot, and how many feet from the lot line, and how many feet from the proposed structure will that be?
The side lots are located, buildings are located within the perimeters of the The actual distance is not stated on our plan, but we've had conversations with the neighbors, and they have not voiced any objections to what we're proposing.
Question from the floor, Mr. Chairman. Is that as a follow-up?
Let's get through the board questions first.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, you said it falls within the setback. So what is the distance in the house next to it?
I don't have those figures with me, sir.
Okay.
He said it falls within the setbacks. Does that mean it's 25 feet within the property in both cases?
Yes.
Is that true? Both? We'll find out, I think.
I think we'll find out.
We're gonna find out.
In a second. And so therefore, if it was, if it was, and it met the setback requirements, then we're talking about 30 feet between two structures.
Right.
Okay. And the second question I had is this garage, the upstairs of this garage, was that meant to be living quarters?
No, sir. Not either.
And no water?
No living quarters.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, follow-up on that. How tall would the proposed garage be?
Twenty... 22 feet?
22 feet in height?
I believe so.
I was noticing, it says that the Eppkins seek relief for 20 by 40 garage?
I think that's a mistake.
That's a mistake, 20 by 22. Right, okay.
22-10. And the existing shed, how big is that?
I don't believe it's any more than 6 by 8.
Okay. No, sir. Are there any, what are the soil conditions for this lot? What type of soil?
I don't have those figures in front of me. There's no basement to this garage.
We're just trying to determine if there's any underlying conditions that would...
As far as I'm aware, there is no underlying.
Okay. And what about the topography? What's the topography like? Is it flat?
It's real flat.
And the shape of the lot, you would describe as a rectangle?
And the septic was put in 2013?
Yes. What board is the property? Yeah, I see the two lots that are adjacent to it, and I see Priscilla Ave. What board is it on the other side?
What what?
What board is the property on the other side of it?
On the backside, you're saying?
Yeah, the backside.
It looks like there's another property there.
Is there property there?
Mm-hmm.
Flat.
Okay.
Counsel, any questions?
This reminds me of...
This reminds me of the one that we just looked at.
Okay.
Exactly. It doesn't fall into that category. Okay. Chris, any other follow-up questions?
Nope.
Good. Joe?
I'm okay.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
Good.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up, if there are any abutters or people who are interested in this variance request. Yes, sir, please state your name.
Wayne Sunkist. Wayne Sunkist, I own the lot to the right of the property that, and I just purchased also lot behind where he wants to build. I purchased this property while I'm in the process of it, just waiting for it to be deeded, and for the simple reason that I wanted more property so I could put an addition on my house, and I'd be within parameters of everything. And as far as talking to you, or somebody talking to the abutter, this was the first, when I got the letter, was the first I knew of it. Nobody spoke to me that I know.
Okay.
And I've been there for 25 years, 30, almost 30 years, in the town and off off over 60. 60 years. I know nothing of it.
So you own the house to the right?
And the lot behind it, yes.
And where are you with purchasing the lot in the rear? Do you have a purchase and sale agreement, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And how far away from the property line is your house on the right?
That's where the eight, seven or eight feet is, and the 25. They're both abutting my property, the front.
So your house is 32 feet away from his, or from the lot liner?
I don't know exactly.
Roughly. 32, 30? Less than 10?
Probably.
Less than 10?
No, 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 no.
Okay. That's right here?
No, right here. So where he wants to put it, he owns right here.
He owns here, he's buying here.
Right here, right. The P and S is right here. But his house is right over here, somewhere between 10 and 20 feet.
I guess what I'd like to know is the distance between the two structures.
He's between 10 and 20 feet, so he's in violation of the setback.
Well, it might be a pre-existing.
Pre-existing, yeah.
Non-conforming lot. Pre-existing, non-conforming lot.
We should be able to find that out.
Like I say, I didn't, I knew nothing of this until I got the letter, so...
Okay. And what's your feeling about the applicant's proposed garage?
Well, like I said, I just purchased another piece of property so that if I plan future expansion, and I wanted to make sure I was within all the parameters, that's why I purchased another piece of property there, the piece of property behind him.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions from abutters or persons of interest?
We need to go see this.
I think we're going to also have to require a survey of the, of the distance from, exact distance from the proposed structure and the adjoining lot, existing structure on the lot to the right.
We could do a motion to continue the public hearing and have them come back next month with that information. Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for a variance request with Chapter 48, Section 10 as amended in F5A of the Norfolk zoning bylaw, to continue the public hearing until June 7, 2017, for review of the adjoining properties, the distances, as such. All in favor? Amy, do you have, what do we have scheduled for June already? I know we have a couple. We have De Placido.
Oh, actually, we just have the De Placido at 7:15 on June 7, so I think we could do it 7 o'clock.
What about the Villages?
Well, they'll be after, so 7 o'clock.
Okay.
So at 7 o'clock PM. 7 o'clock PM.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can you provide us the information that we're looking for? Well, he wouldn't.
He wouldn't. It would be the applicant.
Okay, all right. I mean, can you provide us the information so that your neighbor can see it? He can't be here.
Does he know the information that we're looking for?
Do you understand we are requesting a survey?
Right.
All right, to determine both the lot line distances of the proposed, you said was five feet, and then the lot line distance of the existing structure on the abutters to their lot lines, so that we can determine the distance between two structures?
Do you want both sides?
Both sides, and if there's something in the back within 25 feet, yes.
Okay.
Correct?
What you're looking for? All right. Did you want to do a site visit between now and the 7th as well?
What do you guys think?
Sure. Excuse me. Can I just ask a question? It's how he was given the variance, and I was to go put an addition on within the parameters. Would that affect me as far as, well, his, my addition would be too close to his? Do you understand what I'm saying? If I decided to add on that side of the house, but was still in with my 25-foot parameter, but he was...
No, that's not going to affect him.
But he was within the 50-foot setback between structures?
It's a pre-existing, non-conforming, so I don't believe... Have you, when you purchased this property, did you talk to an attorney about what the zoning bylaws were within mind that you're thinking of expanding your property? Because I'm speaking to you. You have a non-conforming lot, yes. You have a non-conforming lot.
I have three lots. I've got three lots there right now.
How do we know he has a non-conforming lot? Well, I'm assuming yours is not a non-conforming lot. I'm assuming most of the properties over there are non-conforming. So how many square feet do you have?
I've got almost an acre and a half there.
On the initial lot?
I have, I've purchased five lots, and I just purchased another one 30, 20, 28, 30 years ago.
Okay. So the question he has is if he's within 50 foot between structures, even if he's, even if he does not fall into his own 25-foot setback, the question is, would he be in trouble as a result of this garage being placed here? If he's, if he's beyond the 25-foot mark, he's fine. Okay, so that was his question.
He is, even though there's a 50-foot setback between buildings?
That's only in... That's residential structures. This is an accessory building. Yeah, that's right. That's the difference. This is an accessory building. So it would not be an issue.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so you're on for June 7, 7 o'clock PM.
Very good, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, you'll be...
I'll have a second.
Yes. And you'll make sure that this gentleman gets the information so that he can respond if this information is...
Why don't you provide Amy with your email address, and she'll make sure she provides that to you as well? Your mail address. Joe, it's getting harder. Even I've gone through it iPhone 7. Did you get a new phone? Yes, look at this. Can you believe it? You know why? I can't travel to Europe with my football. Not supportive.
I appreciate that they want to set a garage in. I appreciate...
Oh, you got the gold case now.
However, quite frankly, if there's a structure, and the structure's also non-conforming, and two structures between...
Right. I think, I think that's wrong. I think the separation needs to be between the units and the garages.
That's what Chris is...
Yeah.
Dan will still be with Ray.
We go see if they're ready. You know, basically, you're one of the ones that we had denied. The structure or...
We simply denied it because it was going to be... I don't know if the lot was non-conforming, but the way the structure was, but also it wasn't in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood had 11 or 12 one-car garage. And so I talked to Bob, I said, you know, and he said, wow, if it's not two cars, it's not worth it. I said, that's your choice. I said, if you would come for a one-car garage and looking for, I think it would have been a six or seven-foot variance. I said, I would have said myself, I said, gee, that seems really okay. But by asking for a two-car garage, what I should have done, what I should have done is before they reinforced that, there's a little side porch that's unfounded, that's no foundation under it. I should have thought about that a little bit more.
And really... They could have slid the garage in there, yeah.
So... The density, used for acres?
This is fat five. I don't understand how you can...
Meaning house, which is important.
Right.
Which we like.
I don't understand how you can...
Which is two hundred six. Again, we like, so these two are very...
Can't put it around. I don't see...
His real case, his hardship comes, hardship being the septic system is put in 2013.
We have to see the basic continuation. I don't understand hardship.
If the septic is put in, because if you look at this lot...
As soon as Ray comes in, we're gonna get started. They're creating your hardship. You bought a house and a garage.
Right.
Okay. You know what I mean? So you can't create your hardship.
That's true.
I realize it's difficult to understand the logic behind this.
I don't disagree.
Don't disagree. Okay. Ray? Hi. Okay, good evening, everyone. This hearing tonight is a continuation of the comprehensive permit for 25 Rockwood Before we get started this evening, the board wanted to give you, the applicant, some feedback on where we, our current thinking and our current feeling about the project. We think it's an appropriate time to kind of weigh in on what our thoughts are. And in consultation with the town planner, our engineers, and our council, we are, we have several concerns about the project. Density is at the top of that list. If you look at other 40B projects that we've approved and are under construction currently in Norfolk, the units per acre are much less than what you're proposing based on what you currently have, 32 units on the acres that you have, it's 5.3 units per acre. And if you look at some of the other projects that have recently been approved or are already built, 106, 108 is 4.4. Holbrook, which is Pin Oaks, 3.4 units per acre. Meeting House Road, which is the complex up here on Town Hill, 3.6 and 2.6 units per acre. And Cleveland Street is a little, although it's approved, is a little on the high side at 4.97. But if you look at the past history of what we've approved here in Norfolk, this exceeds anything that we've done so far. So what we wanted to do tonight is to get some issues out on the table and start having a discussion about what our concerns are so that we can craft a project that the town is comfortable with and that you're comfortable with. Some of the general issues that we're having, and Ray will weigh in, Beta Bill will weigh in, and our council will weigh in on some of the specifics, but the short driveways that you have are a concern of ours. There are no walkways on the streets. Those are a concern of ours. The open area is very small. Snow storage, we think, is extremely limited. The entrance and the exit to the project is still of a concern of ours. The chief of police has weighed in and believes that the access and egress to Rockwood is challenging. And so, you know, generally speaking, the project is congested from our perspective. You've got some high retaining walls. The septics are pushed out to the edges, and it's kind of pushing the limits on everything on this property. So Ray, if you want to kind of go into some of the, a little bit more specifics about what we're talking about, that would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, well, planning is all about trying to make everything work, trying to fit all the different issues that go on with a piece of property and try to make it all work. This property's doing that, trying to do that, and there's things that are happening here that, you know, from the bird's eye view, it doesn't seem like it's such a big deal, but as you start to really think about the property, you start looking at issues like there's retaining walls on the north and south border of the property. The north side is not such a larger issue, but on the south side, you've got neighbors now that will have, right along the property line, four-foot-high retaining walls that they'll look at now, that they've never had to look at in the past. So we're trying to balance out the change in topography of the site by putting in these retaining walls to make everything work. I think that's such a great idea. I don't think that's something that the neighbors aesthetically want to look at. Part of those retaining walls are to pick up septic and stormwater design. You've got stormwater and septic basins that are along the borders of your north and south property lines. Don't think that's such a great place to put those things. One septic system is a septic system in number three. It's at the lowest point on the site, one of the lowest points on the site. I don't know what the water tables are there. I didn't take a look at that, but it brings to me questions. It brings questions about how will that work out in the future and in the long term? Is this design going to work out for the folks that end up owning this property? There is a stone wall, this is just one issue that I had. There was a stone wall proposed in the architecturals along the front of the property. I'm not sure anybody knows this, but Norfolk has, the National Historic Districts have designated this street, Rockwood Road, as a National Historic District. That was done last year. Not sure that this stone edifice would coincide with the historic district. I'm not sure that that makes sense. Personally, I don't think it was a good idea. I think maybe opening up that area, keeping it graced, and maybe a fence works out pretty good. I, I looked at units one, two, and three, which are the ones that are along the street. I said this before, I'll say it again, I don't think those units should be there. I, I don't think that, that area works well for the site and it works well for the, the neighbors around there and for the district. There's, talking about roadways, we have a five-hundred-foot cul-de-sac rule on our subdivision regulations, that's a four point one, point one-four, point nine, point one. And the, basically what it says is you can't exceed five hundred feet for any cul-de-sac. I, I think, and this is supposed to be measured from the, the budding road to the end of the cul-de-sac, the paved portion of the cul-de-sac, so we're well in excess of the five hundred feet. I personally think that the cul-de-sac should go. I, it's just, that's my suggestion, and figure out a different way to make that work out. The other thing is you've got twenty-two-foot-wide travel ways. I know in our previous approval with Boyd's Crossing, we, we allowed that. Further inspection of, of twenty-four, twenty-two-foot-wide travel ways, when you've got parking that comes out at a ninety-degree angle and you're trying to make that swing, you've got other traffic coming in the other direction, the extra two feet makes sense. Most parking lots that you park in use a twenty-four-foot-wide aisleway to go through. Those are the things that I, I picked up that I thought kind of don't work on this, on this site, don't work on this, this property. And it leads me to think that there needs to be redesigned, there needs to be a reduction in, in some of the units so that you can make some of these things work. These are the things that I could point to, and, you know, the feeling I get when I look at the site is that there's just too much trying to happen in this, in this location. To me, as a planner, it just sounds like we're, we're trying to make everything fit, you know, and, and by making everything fit, we're not coming up with a good plan, we're not coming up with a good design here. So that's my, my feeling on it.
Okay. Bill, did you want to add any comments?
Well, we, we did review it. Supplemental information that was provided, both the, the site plans as well as traffic and landscaping, and we've provided letters to the boards, or to the board about those issues. I would say, in, in terms of the site itself, kind of looking at it holistically, it is, it is very dense. I think everybody recognizes that, and, um, it is gonna have to be essentially clear-cut, there's not gonna be any existing vegetation that's gonna be saved. I, I think from a strictly engineering constructibility point of view, I think, I think it can be constructed, but certainly there's units that are very close to the property line. Ray pointed out the ones that, out front, I'll say unit one is fairly close to Rockwood Road. Unit five is about ten feet off of the, the property line on the, the northerly side. Again, I think constructible, but holistically doesn't make sense. Unit six and eight are close to the retaining wall that's proposed on the, the southerly side that, that Ray mentioned. And the, the retaining wall that's abutting the, the MBTA property, the roadway does come right up to that, that retaining wall. Again, if you can get permission from the MBTA to construct it, it's constructible. I think there's a question, would it be better if it was, was set back further from the, the MBTA property? It's gonna have to be protected with some kind of guardrail system, and being right against the, the property line and right against the wall, um, snow removal may, may be an issue when you're plowing that, so.
Okay.
Those are some of the things we, we saw as we kind of took a, a larger look at it.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Mike, I had one more that I forgot to mention.
Sure.
There's an overflow, I, I know in, in Beta's review, they talked about having overflow pipes for the stormwater systems, the underground stormwater systems, and in two locations, they installed, they're proposing those along the gross property line. So the gross property is the one that touches the MBTA and is the, the closest one to the train station. So there's two overflow pipes that are basically gonna be dumping onto their property. I'm not sure that's a good idea, I, I just point that out and, and, and hope that we can come up with a better solution.
Okay. Chris, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think we, I think a big piece of this, and Ray's touch on it, Bill has, is the cul-de-sac is a problem. Uh, the fire department has spoken to it, that they, there's no exit out. It does violate the bylaw with regard to cul-de-sacs. I think going down Rockwood Road, the units on the right-hand side are not in character. Yes, we have a couple of historic units that are on the street, but to have three units right on the road at Rockwood Road, it just, it doesn't seem to fit. These are not gonna be little, small ranch houses, so it's not gonna be fitting in that area. And I like the idea of tying in Hillcrest, I think that would be, that's a, that's a noble, um, change. I think that would improve both water going to both sites, but I think it, again, this is a, it, it's far too dense. It is far too dense. It is, uh, no matter how you look at it, the cul-de-sac has got to probably be reduced. I think the units along Rockwood Road have got to be reduced, and I'm still concerned with some of those test pits. Maybe Bill can talk a little more about those, the test pits on that right side of the septic system that's gonna be close to Rockwood Road. Those are my, those are my key concerns. I really think we're, we're pushing the limit.
Dan, was, from a legal perspective, were there some things that you spotted that you wanted to raise?
I, I think I can ask some questions as we go through the presentation from the applicant and peer reviewer. Just looking at this from a ten-thousand-foot level, I, I think, you know, in, in reviewing the correspondence that's come in from, since the last meeting, I, I think that there's a real concern about water on the site and the ability of the project to infiltrate as much as they're planning to with the stormwater and septic, all in, in a very tight manner. And there's really no margin for error. A lot of these test pits were showing seasonal groundwater four, five, six feet below the surface. And so there really is just the bare minimum separation between the bottom of these chambers, the bottom of the septic systems, and the seasonal groundwater for several of these systems, not all of them, but, but many of them. I mean, most notably, the, the septic system that, that Ray mentioned is at the very low point of the project site, and the test pit indicated that the, the closest test, test pit, which is not actually in the septic location, but is, is near it, was showing groundwater, but roughly four feet below the surface. So it just tells you that, that, that could potentially be a problem. And so if, if any of this guesswork is incorrect, and, and this is guesswork, we don't, this isn't a perfect science estimating what groundwater levels are, because it fluctuates all the time, it changes from year to year, it changes from month to month. So if any of this is off, then this isn't gonna work, and it's gonna result in, in water flowing in undesirable locations. So the, the problem is that, you know, you've got a septic, for example, in that low point, where do you move it? There's not a lot of other places on the site to move it, and I think that the comment that was made that maybe if this wasn't so dense and we had more open space, then there would be additional areas to put things like septics and stormwater. So for example, if something fails in year five or something, you got somewhere else to put it that maybe has a better separation of groundwater. And that, so I think that, that general comment kind of leads to a conclusion that this site, this project would probably be a lot better if it wasn't so intense of a use. And it, you know, it's not so much how close these buildings are together, that's not really objectionable, I don't think. I think what's objectionable is that the lack of open space, it's just, it, it's a very congested site. And if there was more arid space to handle all the water, that would be a vast improvement. On the plus side, we, we've had negative comments. I, I think on the plus side, I think everyone agrees this is a great location for this kind of housing.
Yep.
It's transportation-oriented, you can walk to the train station, it's close to town center, so this is really an ideal location, except for the site distance issue with Rockwood, that's not ideal. But aside from that, this location itself is, is a great location, and I think it really deserves attention from us and, and cooperation back and forth with the town departments and the applicants to try to make this thing work.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Other comments?
I guess I'm, I'm interested in hearing the traffic study, ask some questions about the traffic study.
Okay. All right. All right. So to kind of summarize, there's one other thought that I have as well, the, you know, the access and egress under Rockwood is kind of problematic. I, I've always felt that, um, the, the midway branch access onto Boardman could be a solution to access onto the property for emergency vehicles, and I haven't talked with, we haven't talked with the selectmen, but my guess would be that before they would give permission to use that road, I think they would want to see some reduction in, in units as, as well. So that's, that's the sense I get from, from what, from what they're thinking. But I think that, that back access is gonna be an important solution to trying to make everything work on this project. So, I mean, having thrown all this at you, I, I know it's a lot, and probably not what you were expecting tonight, but we wanted to kind of give you an update on what we're thinking, what we're feeling, so, I mean, we, we play poker with our cards face up, we want to throw everything out there so you're aware of what we're, what's going through our heads as a board. And I, I think we can do one of two things. We can schedule a workshop next week and try to start working on some of these issues together collaboratively, or you can go back to the drawing board and come back next month with a, another plan. We're, you know, looking at a reduction of somewhere in the vicinity of eight to twelve units, and we can go whatever direction you think would be better for you as the applicant, workshop next week, or come back with a new plan next month.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, again, Christopher Agostino, counsel for the Village at Norfolk LLC. As you indicated, this is somewhat of a surprise as far as major concerns about density. We'd already gone through one additional plan iteration based on the comments that we had heard at the first hearing and then again at the second hearing. This plan set dated May eleventh consolidated a lot of the comments that came up initially, particularly about emergency access and stormwater management, and as you see, the major change is that cul-de-sac, and now we're hearing potential concerns from the board about the cul-de-sac, even though we had vetted that issue with the fire department, and we thought we got some feedback that that was preferable, understanding that from our perspective as the applicant, we don't have the right without some town grant to use that back road as emergency access. So we're working with what we have available and, and putting forward the applicant's proposal for a project that will work. And I think, as you heard from the town's peer review consultant, and as is evident from the peer review documentation that have gone back and forth based on this May eleventh plan, we wouldn't propose something that's not constructible. And at least preliminarily, a lot of the issues that we're hearing about density are related to concerns about potential engineering hurdles, such as dealing with wastewater, stormwater management, and at least preliminarily, density and those issues are not in conflict. We can, we can, at least from a preliminary point of view, construct it at this density and go forward with final plans. Now, at the final planning stage, I think one of the open questions was groundwater mounding. So we'll do a groundwater mounding analysis, and if that reveals during final planning that we are too dense in areas and we need additional room to allow for some of the additional stormwater and wastewater effluent to permeate into the soil, then those types of things would be handled. If we're talking about a redesign that would eliminate eight to twelve units, in, in doing that, you know, that would be a, a pretty substantial engineering change that would change a lot of the conceptual work that's gone into this to date. So if that's the direction we're going in, you know, I think that's something that we have to take back first before we just say, let's go workshop changing, you know, losing eight to twelve units. But I'm glad we, we got that feedback now before we cut through another iteration of the plan. So definitely appreciate that. I think, at, at least tonight, it would make sense to go forward with some of the more, some of the additional detail that was put into this plan, because again, this plan consolidates a lot of the engineering comments and feedback that we had initially. So we'd at least like an opportunity to hear some of the details from the board's peer review engineer as to what really may be the engineering hurdles that we really want to focus on. I mean, we heard from the board's attorney, but I think the thirty-thousand-foot view from the perspective of the board's peer review engineer, and obviously from our engineer, is that preliminarily, this is constructible. And it being, again, a transit-oriented project where smart growth guidelines call for more dense development near transit hubs and downtown, or I wouldn't say downtown, but town, village, centers and those types of things, that's the proposal that we put forth, that's why we did it, this density. So, you know, understanding that that was our mindset and understanding that preliminarily this is constructible, if we want to continue along those lines of putting forward a project that complies with the smart growth and is constructible, we'd probably prefer to push forward with our proposal at this density, and then if at final plans, we are encountering that a groundwater mounding analysis shows that potentially we do need additional room, then maybe at that point it would be appropriate to come back to the board. You know, if the, what a selectmen were to, for whatever reason, decide that to facilitate this town-village environment that you have developing here in Norfolk, they would seek to potentially do something different with access, then maybe we could consider that. But as we stand here, or as we're here tonight, I think, you know, we're not, we're not putting something forward that we don't think can comply with the state standards. And then as far as, you know, the comment that it's, it's questionable or there might be problems going forward, I would, you know, still, and I think I described this at the outset, point out that the project has to comply with all applicable state standards. And those state standards are imposed at a very high design level that takes into account a lot of the unknown. And oftentimes, in what are described as marginal sites with quote-unquote "high groundwater", although four feet down is, I mean, that's, that's like a great site for you, that's a, that's a great site with four-foot separation of groundwater, but the state standards are such that, and the peer review process is such that if there's a real concern from the town about design and density just in and of itself, we'll talk about that. But I would not, at this point, say lose twelve units because of engineering concerns, particularly where we've had a comment that engineering-wise, preliminarily, it's constructible. So planning, absolutely. We, we want good planning, which is why we've proposed a transit-oriented, denser-than-normal development. You know, we, we talked about some of the other densities of the forty B projects. This one being close to the town center, we might get something on the order of five. As a matter of fact, the old rule of thumb, and I know Attorney Hill likes this one, is, is eight units per acre. We're at five units per acre. So we're not, you know, we want to have quality planning, and we want to continue the conversation. I think it's just a question of how do we optimize the process going forward, understanding that if, if the board's request is lose eight units, I think we have to really ask ourselves some serious questions and, and decide where we're gonna go with it. Because preliminarily, we've done enough preliminary testing to propose a constructible project. We vetted the cul-de-sac, and as a matter of fact, the cul-de-sac is the result of prior comment, and we vetted that with town safety officials, and that was the preferable conclusion. If that's not the board's desire, then we, we can continue to discuss that, but I think we need to have an idea, is it a, is it a question of constructibility, or is it a question of, of density in and of itself? And where it's density in and of itself, if we're talking about a transit-oriented development, let's not, let's not eliminate units just for the sake of concerns about constructibility where we have comments and feedback that it is constructible. Again, we have to go through final planning. Final plans would require an expensive groundwater mounding analysis. The groundwater mounding analysis may reveal that we need more space, but just, just looking at it and identifying things like groundwater and wastewater management on site is a concern, you know, we need to, I think, go back... onsite as a concern, you know, we need to, I think, go back on our own to consider that and then maybe we could get some feedback. But as it stands, we're proposing a transit-oriented development that is constructable from a preliminary perspective and that, yes, is more dense than you've seen in prior 40B projects. But again, it's below what was a guideline of eight units per acre and under the state standards, it's constructable. And we wouldn't propose a project that wasn't constructive. And we wouldn't propose a project that is going to have engineering problems down the line. You know, for instance, reserve area, reserve area is built in to Title V. You have to have a reserve area within your proposed septic system arrangements. Things like stormwater, there was a question of whether or not we were going to tie in to off-site stormwater detention basins. We went back and actually redesigned preliminarily to attenuate stormwater onsite. So engineering, we can deal with, but if there is a, there is a real aversion on the part of the town that says, "This is bad planning," which we don't necessarily agree that it is, but if this is bad planning, thank you for bringing that up tonight. We appreciate the feedback. And then, you know, if the answer is, "Go figure out how to lose units or come back with some other design," then I think we have to go back as a development team and do some soul-searching on that.
Can I, yeah, I just want to make a couple of points. So I think, I think we mistake to take away from the comments that you heard that this is an issue of constructability. It's not simply constructability, it is planning. The comment about the 500-foot dead-end length, that's been raised by the planning department, by the fire and police. This isn't about unit numbers. It's about specific design concerns of the project. Now, I know the chairman said eight to 12 units. I don't think you should be taking that literally. I think what he was implying is that that might be a density reduction that could accommodate and mitigate the problems that we're seeing with the site. It's not necessarily we're looking for a reduction of eight to 12 units, it's just that that might be the number. I don't think, I think what the message you should be taking back is, address this congestion concern overall, address the length of this road that dead-ends, address, you know, the issue with the water on the site and what's going to happen if those numbers were off. On the cul-de-sac issue, I think what was conveyed to you last time was that they didn't like the stub end, they preferred a cul-de-sac end. It wasn't that they agreed with the length of the road. So I think, I think that's an important clarification on that. I think that there's a consensus with the board that having a long dead-end road of this length without that secondary means of access, which, you know, we've been waiting for you guys to tell us if you have permission to do that, and at this point you don't. So I think the concern is that without that emergency access, a secondary means of egress, that this is a very long road. With respect to your concern that reducing the density would require a full redesign or reengineering of the site, I don't think that's necessarily true. You know, I could envision a change to this plan that eliminates the units that are furthest, where's my north arrow?
Straight up, straight up.
So furthest to the west. If you eliminate, you know, those units back there, then you've opened up a ton of space where you could infiltrate your stormwater and septic in an area where I believe is relatively high and probably you don't have the high elevation of groundwater in that area. You create more open space, you have more elbow room to deal with such issues as the turning radius of the road, which I know was raised in the Beta Report. It's not ideal, it passes, but it's not ideal. So I don't think it's a situation where you have to go back and completely redesign this project. I think there's tweaks you can make that might result in a reduction in density, but the main point here is not to reduce units, the main point is to address these concerns that, yes, it might relate to constructability, but, you know, you mentioned it's a preliminary plan, it's constructable based upon preliminary plans. That's fair, I accept that. But I think we all need to accept the fact that all of this design work is based upon predictive modeling. It's not science, it's not exact science, it's based upon models. And models are dependent upon accurate variables that get plugged into that model. And so if those variables are off by any meaningful degree, then things don't work. And if you don't have alternative areas to put things, then it's not going to, it's not going to work. And you mentioned the reserve areas for the septics. Well, your reserve areas for the septics are in the same location as the septic. So if that area doesn't work, the reserve area is not going to work. So I think there's an overall consensus that it's a very congested site. It's not necessarily the unit density, it's just the other issues of congestion which arise when you do have a lot of, a lot of infrastructure happening in a very small confined area. You know, you get the retaining walls on property lines, you've got septic systems 10 feet from property lines, you've got buildings very close to property lines, five to 10 feet. That is a planning objection that I think is reasonable and I think that's kind of the message that is intended to be conveyed to you tonight.
So appreciating all of that, I think, let's narrow it to two things. I still, in that, Attorney Hill, heard engineering concerns. And I'd like to hear more from Beta, the town's peer review consultant, as to what may be the engineering limitations. And I know one of them, groundwater mounding, comes up, and from a preliminary perspective, we wouldn't have done that yet. The other issue, and I think as far as this layout, is that our understanding was that town safety personnel were satisfied or okay with length of cul-de-sac and the cul-de-sac design. So Fisher, would you just speak to that one?
Yeah, I did meet with the fire chief and he actually endorsed this concept. And he says, "I don't need you to do any sprinkler system anymore, any fire suppression systems, nor is there any need for emergency access." So he actually endorsed that.
And that would be, one of the alternatives that I've seen on a project like this would be if there really is a concern about access, you could sprinkler it, but even with this design, we vetted it with the fire department and they were satisfied. So that's cul-de-sac. You know, and I'll-
Well, that's fire, that doesn't address all-
Well, we have, I mean, fire, you're right.
Sprinklers don't help a kid choking on a-
Ambulance, ambulance access. You know, and again, the alternative, when I say complete redesign, is we've chosen this particular style of unit because we thought it was in, it was congruent with what you would expect to see in Norfolk. But the alternative would be duplexes or side-by-side townhouses to, or even go up to, you know, maintain unit count or potentially even increase unit count on a site like this, where, you know, we could free up open space, but the alternative is a different housing product. We do have the area onsite to do onsite disposal of wastewater. We do have the area onsite and the soils onsite to deal with stormwater runoff. So at that, to that point, I'll turn it over, or I'd like to, you know, we could hear from Mr. Pavlik again with Outback Engineering, who's the lead designer for the board. But I read through the engineering peer review from the town and it appeared as though, usually what we look for from a preliminary perspective is major engineering hurdles. Is there something that says, "Whoa, we're way off, this is not going to work?" What I'm hearing, not necessarily from the town's peer review consultant, Beta, but from the town's attorney, is there may be variables and we might have, you know, down the line, a problem. But from an engineering perspective, I haven't seen anything that says, "This is not going to work" or "You shouldn't even go forward with it." So I mean, with the chair's consent, I think the next thing to do would be, what does the town's engineer think about it from a constructability? You know, maybe drill into that.
Well, I think we can go back and forth on this tonight. I think it'd be a much more productive session if we do a workshop next week and get all these issues out. And, Ray, Bill.
If I might just, and I did say constructability, and this is preliminary, and we don't see any fatal flaws in the layout or the design. The boards brought up, and the board's attorney have brought up certain things, and one of the issues we did raise, which potentially is a major issue, is groundwater and groundwater mounding. With the amount of septic and the amount of stormwater infiltration on the site, and I know the response has been, "You are going to do that, but you're going to do that as part of final design." I might suggest that that is something that may affect certainly the density and the number of units you can get on here. And I think that, I don't want to confuse engineering constructability with good planning either. I think there are certainly, from a planning perspective, some improvements that could be made. And that may very well mean the loss of some units to improve the layout and address some of the board's concerns as well. So I just, we did do an engineering review and I just want to clear up that constructability does not equate necessarily to good planning. So I think there are some improvements that can be made.
Yes, Fisher.
We, I recognize the importance of water mounding analysis and, believe it or not, we started that first thing. The only problem, the only reason why it's not completed, not because of lack of effort, but the water table is so low that the hydrological engineer, hydrobiological engineer said, "I cannot do it." The water table, we drilled, we have several wells around the site to monitor the water table. He just, on the, he simply cannot find water on a lot of those wells. It was below 20, 18 feet or so, which he needs to find it in order to, because we've had a dry season, even now, with all the rain that we've had, he still doesn't have water to run his, what's called slug test. So I'm actually pretty astonished that people think that there's high water table there. Yes, on the bottom of the, on the bottom of the site, near the, yes, there is a five-foot water table, but that's actually considered very favorable. And it is not, it is not open to variations, as Attorney Hill said, because that's, there is science to it that determines not where the water table is, but where the, as you know, where the models are, where the rest line is, which is where the water lives. And this is not, this is not made up by us. This is science that was developed by the state to mediate these discussions. So they have standards that we have to comply with, and I believe if we have complied with and if we comply with it, it's not really open for interpretation.
Thank you. I just, if I, I just want to make sure everyone understands what we're talking about when we're talking about groundwater mounding. There's a groundwater table, some of the test pits exhibited either groundwater or modeling that would indicate that there is groundwater there. When you infiltrate into the ground, there's a tendency, depending on the soils, for that groundwater to start to mound up where you're infiltrating. And if that start, that groundwater mound intercepts the required distance between the bottom of your infiltration system and the groundwater, then you have an issue. And on a site like this, there's a lot of infiltration between septic and stormwater. So I think it, I understand your point about the test wells. Like I said, there was some, certainly indication of groundwater in the test pits, so I think it's an important analysis to go through.
Are there monitoring wells on the site?
Oh, yeah.
Have you labeled them on the plans? All I see is test pit locations, I don't see well locations. Are they on here?
Yeah. They're shown on the existing conditions plan.
So we don't have any data for the test pit?
I mean, if you want to, just a suggestion, if you want to give us the data from those monitoring wells, like, that would, I think, help us-
Well, actually, beyond that, we've already started down the road of this groundwater mounding analysis. And that was something that was identified by Beta as, "Hey, you're going to need this before you go forward." Ordinarily, we might reserve an analysis like that to final plans, but where the board really has concerns about these types of things, then we would be able to finish that groundwater mounding analysis at this preliminary stage, give more certainty to the board about this design.
We started it eight months ago. It's not, it's not because we weren't able to do it, to finish it on our end, but we just simply could not read water because it was so, no water. And he needs, I was, I'm a layman, you know, I'm not like you experts, but I was told that you have to have water to run your slug test in the well, but there was no water. He said, "What can I do?" So he did some analysis, but he's, the slug test he could not do until there is water. And even with all that rain that we had, he said, "There was so little water in the well, monitoring wells, I couldn't do it." So that was, that's what's holding us back, not the lack of effort.
Mike, if I could make a suggestion, have you had any of these test pits witnessed by the Board of Health?
Yes, sir.
They were witnessed?
All the septics have been used.
I mean, it might make sense to have the Board of Health agent go out to the site maybe once to look at these monitoring wells and look at the readings that you're talking about and just give us a memo with your data that you're, if you can give us the data from these wells. And then I think that would, I think, go a long way to addressing this concern about the water levels and-
The last two months has been out like six or seven times.
No, I think that's fair. I mean, this is, this is a wet season. Last April, where a lot of your test pits were done, where it was, I think, still in the drought. But this year-
But they were monitored or being monitored.
No, I know, but I'm talking about the test pits. But the monitoring well data would be very, very useful.
Sure, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Ray, did you want anything else?
No, I think this comes down to the situation of, as far as I'm concerned, it's a planning issue. It has to do with, you know, when you're building a building, a structure up, you get the minimum code. Most people don't build a house to minimum code, they build it to something much higher than the minimum code. What I'm trying to say, my point is only that we're stretching the limits, we're trying to fit it all in there, and it doesn't fit. There's too much going on. If we, if we change the roadway so that you didn't have the roadway button up against the MBTA property to the south and then the Housing Authority property to the north, I think that solves one of the problems. So I think, you know, the issues that we brought up tonight, I think they're real issues and I think they can be, they could become issues for the future. I would hate to have the neighbors flooded out because the stormwater system stopped working at some point during a heavy rain. So that's my big concern, is that, you guys may be, may be building it today, but in 20 years from now, a neighbor might be stuck with a flooding problem that they have no solution for. And, you know, we have a homeowners association that now has to deal with that, or the town has to step in and try to fix the solution.
Okay, Bill, anything else? Dan, you know, I think you have a, you know, that we're a very collaborative board, we like to, we like to see good projects built. I think it'd be very productive if we can get together next week, take the plans out, take our pens out and do some markups, give you, we'll share with you some of the ideas that we have in more detail. I think that'd be very productive. I think we can go back and forth tonight, but I think a workshop session would be extremely productive and get this back on track very, very quickly.
I would agree. I think there are definitely some differences that need to be resolved. That being said, if the board would like, we were prepared to give a presentation on a little more detail about the look and feel of the project. Tom Ryan of Ryan and Associates, it's the landscape architect, is here tonight. We have slides ready if we'd like to see a little bit more about what it might look like. And I leave that up to the board.
What do you want to do? You want to do that the work session or do you want to do that tonight?
I think they can give a look and feel of what it's going to look like.
Let me have some audience members that'd like to see that.
Okay. All right, why don't we do that tonight then?
Yeah, okay.
Hang on.
Did you get our slides?
Yeah, we're going to do the presentation first.
Is the workshop going to be open to the public? Will that be taped?
No.
Then it won't be open to the public? That'll be a private meeting?
No, yes, that's correct. That's correct.
That's it?
Yeah.
May I add one?
Yes, sir.
And do what, 27 Rock? The private meeting, who's going to guide the meeting? Who's going to guide the plan? Because I've got a ton of concerns down front. I've got the main road, I've got the entrance on the 19 property, I've got- in-town rules, would be a road in and four houses. And I don't really care about the development itself, but being impacted down front is a big deal, because my house is going to be looking at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 19's going to be looking 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5, 6, 7. That's a big deal, when you're used to looking at open space and the road. Mike, the phone. Sorry.
Just, I'll repeat the comment for everybody. The abutment 27 was identifying the units at the front of the development site near Rockwood Road. Just to clarify the process, and I think the board's heard your concerns, I think what we heard tonight is they'd like to see those eliminated.
Well, I'm more, I'm more upset about the board dumping this on you, that this project has to be changed tonight, three months in. That's what I'm more upset about. You had the chance to look at the plan ahead of time, before the first meeting, and the concerns are more with water, too. This woman here has flooded out. In the past, this woman here, this is the one?
Yep.
This woman here has flooded out in the past, from snow winter water, frozen ground, rain, water running in her basement windows. This is a low spot. That's a low spot.
And just to further clarify, on the work session, the only reason it's, we've identified all of the things that the board had concerns about, and what would happen is, the board would appoint one board member just to further drill down on those concerns, at an informal meeting between the applicant and the board.
The informal meeting thing, it doesn't let everybody know what's going on, but...
Well, frankly...
I mean, you take everything, you put it in a bucket, you throw it up on the wall, you come to town, and you say, "This is our plan, and this, you've got to take it," because it's 40B. You've got to take it, we're just going to wear you out. That's basically what it comes down to, because that's what 40B is. The state approved this already and said, "Yes, you can do it," and you're using state rules to come to town. And I don't have a problem with the development. I don't care if you put every unit side by side and put 50 units in there, put 100, but don't impose it on the people that are here. This woman over here is going to have, what, 225 headlights coming into her house every day? Turning left and right, right here. When you could put the driveway right in the middle. This house is set back away from the road. This is a stone wall with bushes and flowers and crap in it. You turn left, you're not shining any headlights in anybody's yard. You turn right, you're still pretty much far away from her. You've got problems with the MBTA coming down the hill. Right here. You've moved it here because you don't have sightline through my house. That's basically what your problem is. Right there, that's my house, your sightline put here, you can't see down the street. And don't tell me you can't. At 14 and a half feet, you don't have a chance in hell of going through that stone wall in my house.
I'll leave it to the board, you know, if you want to take further public comment, but I think one of the things that was raised in the peer review was the site entrance, and that's one of the other concerns that was raised by the board tonight.
I've offered to help with the site entrance, so you don't really have a site entrance, but the rest of it you have a problem with.
Yep, so, you know, we'll continue to consolidate all these issues and figure out where we end up.
That's why we have public hearings, to hear what the abutments have to say.
We want to have the landscape presentation, and then maybe public comment after that, if we want to hear more from Beta, because I know we had our traffic consultant here to answer questions that Beta may have, because the entrance was peer reviewed. Again, I think we'll go forward, Mr. Ryan can do the presentation, and then we'll take it from there.
Why don't we do the presentation?
Are you going to hear from the traffic study again, Mike? That was pretty much a sham at the last meeting.
We'll be, what, what did we do with the traffic study? Do we have some issues to review with that?
Yes, that we're going to go back and review.
Yeah, we're going to go back and look at that.
And you're prepared to...
We've got the consultant here to...
Right. So, we can hear that.
Yeah, we can hear that. Yeah, we're going to be doing that tonight. All right. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Well, this is, this is our landscape plan, and in light of everything, everyone is... Where can I stand where I'm not going to block everybody? The entrance in off Rockwood, we have a wall that's been talked about, that maybe we're going to have to take another look at in historic context. I was unaware of the historic nature of Rockwood, and we'll come back and look at that. And then the three units here, we have street trees along the street coming in, and then the loop here with a green, that all the houses that wrap around here face on the green, with a walk around the green and front porches on the inside. Then the cul-de-sac back here with houses, standard houses here with garages facing front, and, and front doors here. All the, all the homes will have fenced-in yards, we have street trees, we have planting showing for each unit. Let's move to the next slide if we can. Is there a clicker I can use, or you want to...
No, there's not.
Your van, what?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So, this is our, this is our planting plan. So, one of the peer review comments was about species of trees and the spacing. We have added a couple of additional species in here and not used some of the ones on the list that actually now are suspect because of salt damage and overall global warming. Things like ash and sugar maple that are on the list are kind of questionable, so we've substituted a couple of other species in which are, which are, tend to be more hardy. So, things like the swamp white oak, which is used at the 9/11 memorial in New York, is one that we're using here, and the tulip tree and the plane tree, both of which are more, more hardy than some of the things that are on the standard list. We've also grouped the trees by species, so that we have sub-neighborhoods that are reinforced by species of tree rather than alternating 1, 2, 3. We're grouping them here, then here, then here, then there. We find that most natural stands of trees have a lot of the same species together and then transition into another species area, so rather than a lot of different ones, there's a, there's kind of a natural family relationship between the trees, and aesthetically, we like the looks of that coherency around the, with the front porches and the same street tree altogether, creating kind of sub-neighborhoods within the, within the project. We also have smaller ornamental trees, so we have some cherries and some dogwoods. We're using birch trees as that ornamental thing, and that's some of the smaller trees that you'll see here. So, we have kind of this, this network of trees that, that works around the infiltration basins and are in there to create that scale change between the houses and the street. Let's go to the next one. And this is a detail of what the individual yards will look like. So, every house has a fenced-in yard with a wood, a wood fence. Some of the ones have a little bit bigger ones, some have a little bit smaller, they all have patios. They'll all come with planting along the street, so we'll have porches and foundation planting along the street, and then fenced-in yards where the homeowners can add their own touches to the inside. So, some of them will want, if they've got kids, they'll have a bunch of grass and probably not much else, and, you know, other people can, you know, enhance that landscape as they go. But everyone will have the fenced-in yard and a patio, and then planting along the front. So, the streetscape from day one will look like people have been there, and that'll be in and mature, but people that can take their own private space and develop it any way they want. Let's go to the next one. The peer review also asked for planting details, which we provided here, so these are our standard details for trees and shrubs and plants and ground covers. This is our fencing plan. The peer review asked us to consider adding, adding some more board fence, we've done that. So, we had a couple of gaps with chain link here and here and here. We turned those over and made those into board fence to give a more continuous privacy line across the property line over there and up against the MBTA. So, next one. This is the front entrance that you've talked about, and I guess we'll be reassessing, but this, it's, you know, set back from the street and sets up that gateway between the project and Rockwood, so, you know, a threshold piece. So, the first unit would be back behind this wall and wouldn't be fronting on the street, but, and maybe we'll be able to do that in planting and/or fencing rather than wall, but we'll take another look at it as something that's more appropriate to the historic district. Next one. Yeah. Yeah. So, stop me if you have any questions or comments, please. This is our lighting plan, and the red dots are streetlights, the yellow ones on the garages are lights that'll be up kind of on the street level, but, but mount on the garages, and then the green ones are more pedestrian-scale lights that we'll be using. And the idea behind the lighting is not to create a completely lit street, you know, so that it's, it doesn't feel urban, but we're lighting the critical intersections in the corners, figuring that most of these projects of this type, you have so many porches and you have so many lights on, that if you add another layer of continuous streetlights, you can, it's kind of overpowering, particularly for the neighbors. So, we're putting in what's necessary for safety on the corners to try to keep the general streetlight level down, counting on the lights in people's yards and on their porches to create that ambient light without overpowering everything. There was a discussion about looking at photometrics. The lights that we have are all LEDs and can create any pattern we want, so all the ones along the outside edge, we use a pattern that throws the light sideways and cuts it off directly on the neighbors. So, we have the units, or the lights particularly over here, and over here, where we can put in the light pattern that throws it out and cuts it off and pushes it sideways as opposed to out to trespass over the neighbors. Next one. These are the details for the lights that show the general style and heights here. So, and we have some additional lights, a couple of things where we're doing some uplighting at signage out on Rockland, and some, also some lights within our community building, and there's some trellises, so there'll be some downlights in the trellises, and those are all showing here with their technical specs. Next one. So, these are some of the lights that we're talking about using, so this is the pedestrian light, that'll be up mounted about like this. The, the streetlights will be up mounted at at least 14 or 16 feet, I forget which one. Some downlights that'll be in the trellis, some steplights. We have some, some steps that go from the green down to the community building, and also we have some steps along our walkway, and they'll, we use lights like this to light our steps. These are some typical unit layouts for backyards. On some of the units where we have a porch on one side and garage on the other, we're containing that private yard with fences front and back. On the ones that have the garages and the front porch, both on the same side, then we're, they were containing the yard with, with board fence on all sides. So, this is kind of typical maybe of a stone wall that maybe we're going to be taking another look at for the historic nature. Chain link, that was the idea for the stone arch within the wall. This is a fencing, typical patio, and the trellis out there.
And that's it?
Yeah. Any questions?
Mike, correct that you can't plant trees on top of septic leaching beds, is that right?
Yes.
Just looking at some of your tree locations, they seem to be in the vicinity, in the area of leaching beds. Were you, were you working with...
Yes, we were. Yeah, we worked closely with Jim on that, and, and we made him move some of his beds.
Okay. You mentioned community building?
Yes.
Where is that?
Sorry. It was covered before, but we have a community building here on the edge of the green.
I think it's a gazebo, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's gazebo.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, you know, not heated, but it's a, it's a gathering building, you know, that people go into and use with two trellises on either side and then a terrace behind.
Okay, when I picture gazebo, I'm thinking, it's not an enclosed building, it's a...
No.
Okay.
Yeah. The fencing that you mentioned, what does that look like? What is, how was the height? What is the material? It's, it's a board fence. I think it was on our last, you know, it's a standard board fence about six feet high, and we ended up with vinyl with that? Yeah, in vinyl.
Similar to what's over in 106, 108?
Yeah, it's on the last one, it's kind of...
Middle-left there?
Yeah, like that. Yeah. And it'll have plant, and along the street, it'll have planting in front of it to kind of reduce the height of it, the visual height from the street. Any other questions? I can...
Thank you very much.
It was a good presentation.
Thank you, Tom. I just, quickly to follow up, I think Tom's presentation highlighted the design concept of this single family with a small outdoor private space that's secluded and that each single-family home would have. That was the design concept that the developer's proposing, and I think what the developer had indicated in talking about a redesign would be, for this particular product, which we think is a unique product, and we think it makes sense for this lot, the site layout is driven by that. They're tied together. So, if we were to go in a different direction, then the building typology might change. We might be looking at side-by-side townhouses, potentially, you know, like I said, going up, but we think that this is a unique product that's appropriate for this village setting, and that's what's driving the site design and the layout. So, they go hand in hand.
Thank you.
You might have an audience question.
Is there a hand in the back? Yes, sir.
Chris Henry, 30, Boardman Street. So, the, my question is regarding the fencing that surrounds each individual home. Is that, like, the association responsible for that, or is each individual homeowner responsible for the fencing?
I think that's association.
Yes, it's an association. So, the exterior ones as well as the ones that are around the individual home?
Yes.
Okay. The proposed stone that may or may not change in the front wall there, would that be like a cultured product, or would that be an actual stone product?
It's natural. It's been by works crossing.
I have not.
It's, if you...
Okay. Okay. And typically, there's a requirement in regular traditional zoning that if you're within 50 feet of a residence, that there would be some sort of planting screening done, trees, that sort of thing. Is the fencing done in exchange for that or in place of that, or would there be any kind of screen?
I think done as well. It would be, there's, the one home on Rockwood on the uphill side, you know, right with your building, it has kind of a fence there right at the property line and the stone wall, so it'd be a similar treatment to that, kind of for the rest of the...
Okay, thank you.
Your fences make the neighbors.
Hi, Al. Quaglary, 194 Main Street. A question for Tom. How many lights are in this project when you add them all up, houses, street, steps?
I don't know, I haven't added them up, but they're...
100, 200?
Yes. Well, it's this, I don't know. It's about the final plan. There's, yeah, so there's, you know, there's going to be porch light for every, you know, every house is required to have a light by their front door, so everybody's outside of it. And then we have the streetlights, you know...
Traffic's there. I think we could do something.
And then we'll be seeing the smaller scale lights, the four-ohs and the... So, you know, it's, it's some of the garage, there's no lights on the street.
Is this one light a house? Or is there front and back lights? Garage lights?
Front and back and garage.
So, at nighttime, everybody's going to have their lights on, with this density, it's going to look like a small city. Is that fair to say?
So, that's what, I think Tom was saying, oh, sorry, Owen Kelly, the developer, I think that's what Tom was saying, we, the goal of the lighting... think that's what Tom was saying, we, the goal of the lighting for the streetlights is to not make the whole thing overpowering, but instead just filling the gaps along the road.
I beg to differ. When you're driving up Main Street, and this is a clear view right into that, it's gonna look like a city, you know, full lights and, you know, very disruptive to the neighbors. My second point, seeing as you brought up global warming, and I'm gonna use Beta's analogy, hey, well, how do you think clear-cutting seven acres affects global warming in your professional opinion?
What global warming?
I was just using, you know, some of Tom's terms on this.
Yeah, yeah. I was planning to get some of these taken down.
You're planning to get many trees as you're cutting them?
I think there probably are.
Really?
Sounds like a rhetorical question, Mr. Chair.
That was before.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike.
I think you're planting about forty trees.
Yeah.
And then, I have one more question, Mike.
One more question, and that's it.
All right, can we go to the existing condition plan?
Was that on the segment?
Not on the landscape plan.
On the segment?
Yep. So, the attorney for the applicant spoke about the density, and, you know, you're sort of, you're sort of carrying on like this is some normal, how many acre parcel is it? Is it five, seven, eight? But if you look at the parcel, this is not a normal parcel, and you're trying to jam, you have an opening, it's like a hammer and a sickle at the end with a small opening to the rear. So, when you, when you talk about density, I don't think it's fair for you to state, you know, specs on density, like this is a rectangular or a square lot. You're, you're jamming this thing right down that throat, and that throat is that small opening that brings to the rear. So, you know, the density issue, I don't think it's fair that you're citing those kind of numbers.
Okay.
I have one other question regarding the, you had said that you had dealt with the drainage issue and dealing with it on-site versus before where it showed it running off into the town. Is that based on a ten-year, twenty-year, hundred-year event? And, and is all of that water being kept on-site, or is some of it being taken off-site?
Jimmy, you gonna answer that?
The drainage specs were designed for a hundred-year storm, and we looked at a comparison of pre-development versus post-development flows off-site, and we've got a reduction at the site boundary.
Mr. Chair, you might want to consider hearing from the applicant on the changes they've made on the site drainage, because there were some, I think, some material changes in response to Beta's comments, and maybe you could hear from Beta on the changes as well.
Do you want to address that, Jim?
The comments from Beta?
Your changes to the plan.
Your changes.
The improvements that you've made to the plan from the last.
Okay, you want to just hear the general?
Changes that we made, sure.
If we could go to sheet three, maybe? Right, so, there were two primary changes that we dealt with on this. There was the concern about the roadway that was, we were proposing to tie in as an emergency access out to Boardman Street, so we took a look at rearranging this cul-de-sac, and previously, this roadway had continued, let me see, we had continued it out to this parcel. So, we reconfigured it to fit in a cul-de-sac that meets the town's standard dimensions. And in doing this, we selected different home styles that better reflected the layout that we're showing here. So, it was a, it was a change in the type of unit style there. One of the other comments we had heard about was previously, there was a sidewalk that had wound through the back of units one through three and out to Rockwood Road, and there was a suggestion that we provide a sidewalk along the main entry road out to Rockwood. So, again, we selected different home styles there, and we're proposing a sidewalk along that main entrance. And one of the other concerns was whether or not there should be a crosswalk across Rockwood to connect to the existing sidewalk on the opposite side of the road, and we did a detailed survey along this portion of Rockwood out to the railroad, and what we're hatching in red would be a proposed sidewalk that could be built along the, the same side as the site entrance, so it would have a continuous sidewalk that would connect to the T's existing sidewalk. So, in terms of the site design, I think those were two of the primary changes. And regarding the drainage, previously, at the end of the cul-de-sac, we were proposing to tie into the town's drain pipe that exists in the Midway Branch, I guess it's being referred to as. So, we had a direct pipe connection there, and we were proposing another one over here, and with the revised layout where we're proposing underground leaching beds at all locations that would, so that there's no direct pipe discharge to the town's drainage system. And we did a significant amount, a number of additional test pits on-site since the last meeting. Many of them were witnessed by the border health agent, and so we furthered along the septic design and incorporated that additional soil testing into the overall drainage design that we came up with, so.
That's shown on the plans too, like the test data?
Yes, the new test pits and soil logs are all shown on the plans. So, those were the primary changes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One question, please.
Sure, Mr. Chipman.
Peter Chipman, 201 Main Street. I totally support this project. It's something that we've been working towards for the last ten-plus years, going back to the early days of the Downtown Development Committee. Bringing up things like smart road development, which are standards that are set in the state for one, eight units per acre, twelve units for duplexes, and twenty units per multifamily, we could end up with a very different product. However, given the challenge of the site that's not going to be the normal process, I don't understand why the proponent's attorney keeps saying, well, you're gonna come up with a different product. As the developer has been told to do single-family units, because we have successfully put up some great products in this town that are duplexes, that are fourplexes, fiveplexes, and sixplexes, and they've come out nice, and they look great, they probably create a lot more open space and save a few trees in the meantime. You know, you know, separate and apart from some engineering and traffic issues, which is just a normal progress of any, any, any development, I just wish that you would look into those alternatives rather than kill, as I joked with Jim Pavlik, who actually represented me on a project a while back, of getting the boots on the ground in the downtown, because I think that's where we shouldn't recite of, but maybe look at it differently. And again, I wish this team all the luck in their progress going forward.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've exhausted comments.
Are we done with the public comment part? I thought we were waiting to hear from Beta before we were doing public comments.
Do you have a question?
Well, they're not related to landscaping, so I've just been sort of keeping track. Martha Henry, 30 Boardman Street. I'm curious how the workshop works, so I respect that it would be very messy, probably to have a lot of public voices in that, but it would be helpful to understand what that process looks like, what the outcome looks like, who's driving that, who's facilitating that, is there an independent facilitator or mediator for that? And then, I feel like I hear conflicting messages, and maybe you do too, that we don't want, we don't want you to use Boardman Street, oh, we want you to use Boardman Street. And my worry is, you're gonna go into your workshop, and we're gonna come out with something completely different, and then we're gonna start again in these public hearings, starting with yet another design. And maybe that's the process, and I just am not familiar with that. So, I want to understand, what are the engineering requirements of using Midway Branch extension? Has anybody tested that? Is that wide enough? It is not a very wide path. You know, a septic system truck goes down there to get to Hillcrest Village, and it's a little bit wider than that. That butts my property, so how close to my property can you get if you're gonna build a paved road? Is that even an engineering possibility to use that as a full-fledged emergency access? How wide is that? There's a, I guess, like a leaching field for Hillside Village right there? Can you pave over that? Can you cut into that? Can you develop that land? I want to know the reality of the town's position on that, and then the reality of that being a real possibility for this particular project. And then, I've had the same concern about the water, and I think Mr. Goff hit the nail right on the head. What happens in five years, ten years? We already have a water problem on our site. We're pumping water off that site into our front yard all the time, whenever there's a big storm. So, what happens to the abutters when the numbers are off, when the modeling is wrong? And what happens to groundwater, and I'm not an engineer, when you push thirty-two houses into the ground? When you put leaching fields into the ground? When you put concrete into the ground? What does that really do to those original groundwater testing? So, it's a bit of an education, I don't know those answers, but those are my real concerns, that this is a private, for-profit product, project, that they're gonna go on and move to their next project, and either those homeowners or the town is gonna be left with what is called poor planning, poor engineering, whatever it might be. So, I know I just threw a lot at you, but I'll stop talking now.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, I have one question. But it's been common practice in, in this town to read seasonal high groundwater, the last week of March and the last week of April. This has gone on for over twenty years. I don't know if it's just this town, but it seems to me like every town I do work in, and that's six or seven in this area, that's common practice, and it seems to me that the engineers didn't do any groundwater readings in the seasonal high groundwater places, and now they want to go out in May, in June, and start looking at groundwater in the wells. They should have been doing that in March and April.
I think they did in April. If you look at the plans, I think there's a bunch of readings that were in April of 2017. They can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was.
And I didn't hear that, so.
Dan, do you want to take a stab at some of the questions about the workshop? And that's standard operating procedure for 40B boards.
Yeah, it varies.
CBA boards and 40B projects across the state. Do you want to address that, since you deal with?
Sure.
A number of communities, and you can speak on behalf, not only for our board, but for the boards you've represented as well, other boards.
Sure, so, I think to allay some of the concerns we're hearing from, from the public is no decisions are being made in these workshops, and the board all understands that they have to be very careful not to violate the open meeting law, as well as the public hearing requirements of chapter 40B. So, they can't make decisions at these workshops. It's intended to be a collaborative process, and the chapter 40B is supposed to be a collaborative process between the applicant and the town, because, to be frank, the deck is always stacked against the town on 40B. So, it's actually good for a town to work collaboratively with a developer when the developer's willing to do so. So, these meetings are really just intended to be informal discussions about improvements that can be made, and I think this board fully understands and knows the limitations of that. So, they'll report back, I'm assuming, they'll report back to everybody, the rest of the board at the next hearing after the workshop, to explain what happened at the workshop and what proposals were raised, and then it'll be up to the full board to decide whether or not to accept, you know, those changes or recommendations.
So, wouldn't just, wouldn't be the full board? The boards would appoint one or the town administrator or the town planner would likely attend, and other town officials, or whatever the town decides.
Would there be one person from the public that attends this workshop?
That's not the way we do it, no.
I'm asking if you can change it to do it that way.
Isn't that your calling?
I, what's that?
Isn't that your calling?
Yeah, I have no intention of changing that procedure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think maybe there's an air of, you know, there's back-room deals, we heard in the first meeting. These workshops are not back-room deals. These workshops, as Dan mentioned, they're to try to look at the project, take some of these ideas that are presented at the public hearing, and try to work through them. Try to work through, should eight units be removed? Should, you know, units be moved on the property? It's to work through some of those issues. If some of the issues in the front of the build, on front of the site can be pulled back, it again, there is no decisions, there is no back-room deals, we're not going to change, right now, if you look at the development, there is no access to Midway Branch. They have a cul-de-sac.
I know, but there's a letter from Mr. Fox saying.
There is no access to Midway Branch. There will be no change, there will be no change at a workshop to the current plan. They will be looking at the current plan to decide where, how it's.
You're not gonna yell at.
I'm not yelling, but you're talking over me. It's just the air that the public should be there because you're concerned that there's a back-room deal going on, there is not, because nothing can be decided there. Anything talked about at that workshop is to be presented back to the public hearing and then to be relooked at. What we're trying to avoid, and I think everybody can appreciate this, everybody agrees, we should have this type of development in town. Everybody agrees to that.
Absolutely.
The question is, how dense and how it gets laid out? We want to make sure that we don't send a developer redesigning this product, spending an awful lot of money. Look at the number of men, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, maybe eight. I know they don't, I know they don't do it for free, so we don't want them spending a fortune redesigning something if in a workshop, we can look at some of that stuff, provide some ideas, they can provide some feedback, and then they can come back to the public hearing and present that, without a lot of, a lot of back and forth, back and forth. Look how many hours we've been here. We've been here almost two hours. And again, we want to do this, but you gotta look at the process. It is not a back-room deal. There is nothing that gets discussed.
I wasn't implying it was a back-room deal.
There is nothing that gets discussed in that workshop.
I was never in mind.
It won't be presented to the public again. So, to have the public there, it gets to be as, you know, back and forth, back and forth, that's not the idea behind that. The idea behind that is to look at some of the ideas and try to look at the plan as a whole, so we can give guidance to the developer, and so he can present a better product to us.
I can appreciate that.
So, I just, I just, I get the air of this back-room deal, the public should be there. It doesn't work that way, and it shouldn't work that way. This is a workshop.
It was strictly to streamline information to people that are concerned, no more, no more than that. There was no implication of a back-room deal for me. I just want that on the record.
I also think we've sent some mixed messages to the builder, directly, I mean, that, you know, he's been told, I mean, the selectmen are on record saying that they are not in favor of that, and then the chairman, Mike Calusa, says he is in favor of that, so of the Boydman Street access.
No, I never said that. I never said that. I want to correct, I never said that. I said that.
I thought you said you were in favor of the Boydman Street for emergency access.
Oh, I, I didn't say the selectmen were, I said I personally am in favor of that.
That's what I'm saying, that that's a bit of a mixed message, when you say, hey, here's a road you should go down, and the selectmen, who I believe are in charge of that road.
That's right, that's exactly what I said.
Are on record saying that they are against that.
They make that decision, and so I'm publicly saying I would like to see that used as an emergency exit.
I'm publicly saying that that's a mixed message that we're sending to the builder.
Well, let's be clear about that, though, I mean, the zoning board is the permitting authority, so there, there are often disagreements between boards and towns about what should be done and what shouldn't be done. This isn't the only town that has that kind of politics, so.
Dan, isn't the question really site control?
For the access, absolutely. I mean, you, you have to get permission from the town to do it, and right now, they don't have it, maybe they will in the future, who knows, but that's.
And if you don't, that's why there's a board, because you all have opinions and views and.
Exactly. I'm just, we're just stating what our views and what our opinions are, and selectmen may shut us down. I don't know. I'm just saying what we, as a board feel and think.
So, just to get back on track, could I ask a couple of questions about the drainage?
Sure.
While we're on the topic?
Let's wrap that up.
So, I was reading through the Beta comment letter, and I was a little concerned about the comment about there was no outlets, outlets, outfalls, outlets, right? Emergency outlets.
Emergency overflow.
So, overflow, so that's in the case. So, their, their modeling shows that the hundred-year storm can be handled on-site.
Yes. Just to correct, there are some systems that have, there were two or three that did not, and that's what we raise the concern. The concern is, again, the analysis that we've looked at and peer review shows. The concern is, again, the analysis that we've looked at and peer review shows that the 100-year storm essentially would be contained on-site and won't go through the overflow. The overflow is there, that was raised, that something happens in the system and it can't handle all that. And that certainly goes to maintenance of the system. So there were a couple, there were two or three systems that didn't have overflows that we raised concerns about.
And so there seem to be about a dozen of these infiltration chambers that are being proposed on-site. Can you just describe briefly what these look like? Are these, are these like precast concrete tanks essentially with perforated holes or what?
I can describe. I'd rather let the applicant's engineer describe them.
We actually have a detail. Yes, here. So this is a cross-section through what one of the leaching beds would look like. There are these plastic chambers that are designed for use under roadways, driveways, parking lots, et cetera. And so they're interconnected, plastic chambers surrounded by crushed stone.
Where does the water get in and where's it go out?
So we would have catch basins at certain locations along the roadways.
Just to, so the water goes into the chambers themselves and then leaches out of those chambers into the stone.
Right. So we have catch basins first and then they would be piped into these.
Can you show me where the pipe goes into the, into the plastic?
Yeah, so there's these holes.
View from the top.
Yeah.
Oh, you want the plan view?
Well, I think that he's looking for the.
I'm having a hard time visualizing.
Okay.
Because that's cross-section.
If we can go to, it might be sheet four or five. We have a simpler utility layout sheet. This, here we go. Oh, back one, back, right there. So this was just a simpler layout showing the roadways and drainage areas and other utility lines. But for instance, we have Rockwood Road here and then we come into the entrance, there's a set of catch basins at a low point here that are, with a water quality tank, and that's then piped into a underground leaching bed there. And there's other locations along the roadway where we have catch basins and these tanks to these underground chambers.
All right, so you got a leaching bed, the water then infiltrates from the bottom of the bed into the ground?
Yes.
And what does the bottom of this, of the structure look like? Is it, is it?
It's open. The, the plastic chambers are open and they lay, they sit on top of the, a layer of crushed stone.
Okay, because I've seen other infiltration chambers that are not open, that are concrete with holes in them.
Mm-hmm.
That's not what this is.
No.
Okay.
Form of gasoline separation or oil separation for these?
Yes. So we have catch basin and water quality tanks. So they're designed to separate the floatable gasoline and sediment would settle out.
Who's in charge of the maintenance of those? Is that the association as well?
Homeowners association would be.
And is that what would be handled with the board of health, like as far as the maintenance of when that is being done?
Typically, there's a homeowners association document that specifies that the homeowners have to pay into a fund and we have a detailed operation and maintenance plan that's required that we put together.
Part of the budget.
Right. How do the overall budget, the association fees pay for it?
You know, that's not annually, semi-annually? It's an annual budget that usually is paid monthly by individual.
No, I meant the actual physical maintenance of them.
Oh, I don't know. That we have to the plan, that they come up with an operation, an operation plan and maintenance plan. So whatever plan comes up with.
This site is somewhat unique in that there's no wetlands on-site or in the surrounding area. It's all upland soil and fairly permeable soils that we identified everywhere. So I know there's the talk about, you know, whether or not we have overflows and so on, but currently the site is set up so that there's existing low points on-site. There's a couple of areas at the front of the site and the runoff from the site is such that it sheds. The high point of the site is pretty much in this area. It's running off to the back of the property into the town's existing drainage area towards the southeast here and then towards the front, towards a couple of existing low points. So there's not a lot of areas where it currently discharges off-site. There's, there's just no, you know, typically on a larger site, we might have a wetland or a receiving stream that we could put an overflow pipe out to and have a discharge point, but there's no such area like that on the site here.
Jim, I have a couple of other questions.
We're limited in that regard.
If I could just get through my questions and then.
Sure.
So over time, will trash and sediment get into the bottom of these basins, say like in five years? Is that, is that something that will occur with this design? And if so, is that something that can be cleaned out? Is there, is there like ports or something that you can get in there and clean these things out?
Yes. So that's the purpose of these catch basins and the water quality tanks, getting out the larger trash, the finer sediment and.
So by the time the water gets into these things, it'll be water, it won't be junk?
It's fairly clean water, right.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, and that's standard practice and that's part of the state's stormwater management policy. They're, in a way, very similar to a septic system where you have a septic tank, in this case you have a water quality unit that removes the solids, removes any floatables, removes the sediment. The most important thing with these is maintenance over time. If you don't maintain the water quality unit, then yes, you could get sediment into the infiltration chambers. So maintenance is critical.
That basin down, down by the house.
Can I just, can I just finish my questions and then?
If you want, if you have a question, please raise your hand and I'll identify you because we can't just have this random questioning going on. If you have a question, please raise your hand and I will identify you. Thank you.
All right. Beta made a suggestion, actually, that they disagreed with your exfiltration rate for a couple of the basins and suggested you use a lower rate. Is that, are you agreeing with that comment and will you be?
We didn't have a chance to formally respond to that, but I looked at those comments in particular and what I believe they were identifying is that in this area, the site is sloping like this, so we're cutting the bed into the natural soils on one end and filling on the other end. So what we're going to have to do, it's another detail we'll add to the final plans, but we're going to be removing that subsoil and essentially replacing it with clean permeable sand, so we would still be using the higher infiltration rate.
Okay. And then what about the pre-development condition? Did you have an assumed infiltration rate for the soils, for the stormwater standards?
Are you referring to the basin?
No, it's your site.
Just to clarify, I think, I think that's part of the, it's not a specific infiltration rate, it's part of the curve number that's used in hydraulic, hydrologic calculations. And that's something that was adjusted. We had had a comment initially about the curve number for existing conditions.
Okay.
Which takes into account vegetative cover, land use, soil types, which was adjusted based on the findings of the test pits, so.
Okay, so you're in agreement with the pre-development assumptions? Okay. That's all I had for stormwater.
Okay, Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Paul Kasten. Just a quick comment. I think the board, I think the board realizes the status of the plans. I mean, the plans eventually will have to be totally completed, final set of plans, still subject to peer review. So right now, the plans are way beyond the preliminary stage. There's been an awful lot of detail. Beta has taken a look at that, made some comments. We're basically, I think, in agreement that we can satisfy all of those comments and all of that detailed engineering, even though the questions are very helpful now, all of that will be addressed in the final set of plans that Jim will prepare and still be reviewed by your peer review to be sure that the neighbors are satisfied, that you're satisfied, that the two engineers are satisfied, that the drainage, you know, has to be contained on-site and we have to comply with all of the rules, regulations and laws. Thank you.
I would just, since we have the traffic experts here tonight, there were a few, and what I try to focus on are what are the real engineering hurdles, but there were a few items pointed out by Beta about the site entrance, so I think it would be helpful to at least identify those issues for the public based on this design because that was also raised by the board as one of the concerns they had indicated regarding the site layout. So would the chair care to hear from Beta's traffic engineer?
Yes, let's do that.
I have a question on drainage still.
Yes, go ahead.
I raised my hand. That drainage basin down by the street that abuts that house, has anybody done a comparative analysis on the elevation to that drainage in the basement of that house? Doesn't seem like that drainage basin has an outlet and that house could flood out if that drainage is at a higher elevation than the basement of that house. That was one question. Second question is, and it's for Beta, when we design septic systems and you have a per rate of, say, eight minutes an inch, you're not allowed to put septic sand in and then call the designer two minutes an inch. But it seems to me like that's what they're doing on their drainage caps. Do I have that wrong?
Well, I think there's.
They're using the more aggressive replacement sand instead of the original soil?
Well, I think there's two different issues. One is Title V and the septic systems, which you write is natural soil. The stormwater as well as natural soils and groundwater, there is some more flexibility in the stormwater requirements in terms of adding in additional soil. I don't, I don't think they've been overly liberal in the rates that they're using.
And did you have time to do a pre and post analysis and you agree with their pre and post?
We've reviewed their pre and post analysis and we have some comments that, that don't affect the overall design, but may affect some details of it.
Thank you.
All right, so, sure.
Just if, if I may just preface it a little bit.
Go ahead, Bill.
So we did our initial peer review of traffic, which was presented at the last meeting. The developers' traffic engineer responded to those comments. We had an opportunity a couple of days ago to talk with the developers' traffic engineer and try to work through some of the things that we still had some differences on.
Okay.
Asked for some additional information, which I think was submitted this afternoon. We haven't had a chance to look at that, but I think that the site entrance still is an issue that we need to, to address.
Okay.
Good evening. Jason Ployd with Beta Group. You know, as Bill was saying, you know, we've had some coordination efforts, the applicant's traffic engineer, really to kind of clarify what we're looking for because their comment letter back to us kind of seemed a little like they didn't understand what we're asking for. So we wanted to clarify that and as a result of the 15 comments that we had, seven of them have been pressed. So we're still looking at some additional information to be provided. You know, it's, it's a matter of.
Is that in the latter, sorry, what you're waiting for, is that in the latter of the semester?
May 22nd, yes. So the, as we remember at the last meeting, we were talking about the 2014 traffic counts that were collected at the roundabout and are they valid or not valid? So what they're, what they're going to do is, it was just a quick kind of a comparison of their traffic volumes that they showed within the traffic study on figures two and three. And there was an imbalance along Rockwood Road between Ware Drive and the roundabout. Now, there are curb cuts out there in between that area, a parking lot for the T station, things like that. So we just asked Green International to go out there and just try to justify that imbalance because it was about 75 to 100 vehicles per hour that were kind of off in each direction. So they're taking a look at that to provide support for that imbalance. They're also going to be reaching out to the MAPC to find out if the Regional Planning Commission has any traffic counts in the area on a Saturday. Because what we want to do is we want to find out, is it critical, is it not? We just don't know. You know, the town doesn't have any traffic volumes out here on a Saturday, so this comment is kind of still hanging out there. The September traffic volumes, we looked at all the different count stations around. They've all come out to be generally higher than the average month conditions, so we got no problem with their adjustment to average month conditions. They're going to be conducting some speed runs along Rockwood Road adjacent to the site. As, as they had discussed at the previous meeting, they had collected some traffic volumes and speed data observations further to the north of the driveway. Those speeds seem to be higher than what the applicant's traffic engineer considered would be closer to the site, so we just asked them to show us that information. Why is that important? It's important because speeds come into play with site distances. So if they want to use a lower speed to be able to acquire less site distance, we want to know what speeds they're actually going to be using. So they're going to be going out there and conducting some, some trial runs to be able to find out how fast people are driving both northbound and southbound on Rockwood Road adjacent to the site. They're working with the town to be able to see what kind of safety improvements can be implemented at the roundabout. We got no problem with that. They need to coordinate with the town planner to find out if their growth rate is adequate. Not that we think that it's wrong, but we just want them to make sure that they check in with the town on that. Their background development that they used within the project, we have no problem with that as they were projecting out their future traffic volume conditions. Their transit trip credit, different sources are available to be able to provide what, you know, how people are getting around within the town, whether they're going to work, where they're living, things like that. We understand that the T station down the street is a big draw, especially for this development and pedestrians. I saw on one of the plans here tonight that the applicant is proposing to construct the sidewalk along Rockwood Road down to Ware Drive. That was one of our comments and, and that's great. We want that. We need that pedestrian connectivity out there. The sightline plan. So in Green International's response letter that they provided to us dated May 11th, they provided some plans in the back. The sightline profile plan needs to be adjusted because it, it's done incorrectly.
Was that filed with the board? I don't think I saw that.
The Green International response?
I think that.
You should have a copy of it in your paper.
Oh, it's in there, okay. Yeah, so there should be 11 by 17s or maybe even reduced versions in the back there. But ultimately what it's showing is it's based on, you know, the higher speeds that they don't want to use, so the sightlines are going to be adjusted, most likely, going through a retaining wall, going through a budding property, and it's measured, I don't know if you remember or not at the last meeting, explain what's the difference between stopping site distance is versus intersection site distance. So the stopping site distance is when you're on the road and you're looking at the driveway and you need to stop in time before hitting someone, pulling out of the driveway, for example. Intersection site distance is when you're a stopped vehicle getting out of the driveway, looking to your left and looking to your right to see oncoming cars. The difference between the two is the height requirements that they're measured to and from. The stopping site distance, when you're a car, you have three and a half feet off the road, driver's eye height, to be able to see a two-foot object. So that's the taillight of a vehicle that may be pulling out. Intersection site distance is when you need to see driver eye to driver eye. So that's three and a half feet to three and a half feet. They measure three and a half feet to two feet. So it was almost like that the, the two terminologies were confused and mixed match. So I asked Green International to get involved to help the site engineer revise the sightline profile plan and it will likely change anyway based on Green International's speed study that they do out there. Because again, how far you need to see is really contingent upon how fast people are traveling on the roadway, on the main line, that is, not on the minor street approach. They agreed that they're not going to have any planting signs, vegetation to be able to obstruct the sightlines. Rockwood Road at Boardman Street. Now that intersection there, we talked about it, there's already some delays out there as you're trying to come out of Boardman going eastbound. It's a single lane approach, so it doesn't matter if you're going left going through or turning right. If you have a car in front of you that's stopped, turning left, it doesn't matter if you're trying to turn right, you're still stuck. So they're adding cars, obviously, to the right turns. to the right turns coming out of Boardman going southbound on Rockwood. They're adding traffic on Rockwood going northbound and southbound. So what we asked them to do was to take a look at what kind of potential improvements could be done out there. Not that they are the ones that need to commit to implementing the improvements, but to help the town in finding out what can be done out here. In their response, they identified that at times that intersection is under police officer control, and there has been some discussion of signalization. So what I asked them to do was to conduct a traffic signal warrant analysis, just to find out, is a traffic signal warranted at that location? I think that that would definitely help out the town know if you should put in a signal or kind of look at different alternatives to be able to improve the traffic flow. They provided us with the traffic counts that were missing from the appendix of the traffic study, and it's even missing on the version that's online, too, on the town's website. But we looked at that. We have some concerns with the different values that they used, but ultimately, it's not going to make any difference in the overall operations of the roundabout as compared to what they presented. If they do use these traffic volumes and the traffic counts in the future, we just want them to kind of be aware of the peak hour factors that they used and the omission of the trucks during the weekday morning. But again, it's not really going to change the impacts of the intersection because you already have some pretty good operating levels of service, A, Bs, and Cs. It's not like it's going to drop to an F or anything like that with their development or with these modifications. We asked that, we agreed with Green to continue their discussions with the town regarding their off-site improvements. And then the last comment was not in our original comment letter because it was based on the plans that they provided in their response. I did not really focus in on the onsite circulation, but it was for the truck turns, turning right in off of Rockwood Road into the site driveway and right out onto Rockwood Road going southbound. As shown on their plans, they cross the double yellow center line. We wanted them to kind of take another look at it to see if they can revise the truck turning paths and work with the site engineer to possibly modify the curb radii on the driveway on both the north and south corners along Rockwood Road, because that may help to minimize the actual amount of room that they're crossing into oncoming traffic.
Can I ask a question about that point while we're on it?
Sure.
Does their curb radii comply with the planning board's subdivision rules of rights for streets?
I don't know.
Is that, I would think that if it does comply, I guess it begs the question, is that a problem everywhere in town? Or if it doesn't comply, then that might be a waiver that we might be thinking about in terms of-
So here's the thing, is that based on state guidelines, they show that when you have going from a local road to a local road, so let's say that, you know, the driveway is accepted by the town and it becomes a public roadway, trucks are shown to be acceptable on occasion to be able to cross the double yellow center line, turning right out from the minor street approach onto the main line. That does not mean that you can allow that all the time. That doesn't, you know, like every, every single intersection. That means it's okay. It's not preferred. Take another look at it to see if there's something that you can do to minimize that or alleviate it altogether. So that's why I'm saying that in all cases that are within the town today, it may be acceptable, but for new developments, if there's a way to minimize that, that would be the preferred way.
What about if it's a private road? Because this will not be a town road. Does the state have a standard for that?
So the state does not have information for private roads or for driveways, but in general terms, they look at that as the same as local road to local road.
Just to clarify, it's more of a concern with trucks turning onto Rockwood Road and crossing the center line, less a concern of what happens on the site driveway?
Right. Exactly.
You know, if they cross into the, if they use the whole driveway width when they're turning in, you know, that's okay. It's really what's happening to the traveling public along Rockwood.
If I can just add one more thing, because sight distance is such an important aspect of the driveway. One thing we want to make sure of, that sight distance triangle, that area that they need to be able to see, we want to make sure that the developer has control of that whole area so that he can maintain it clear. If it goes onto an adjacent property, it becomes an issue that the developer may not have control over what happens on that property that could block sight distance. So that's why it's important that we clarify the sight distance and we see it on a plan so that we know the developer has control over being able to maintain that sight triangle.
Keep the triangle on the development.
Right.
Let me know when this will be available. This is obviously a huge piece of the puzzle, knowing what this-
Because with the driveway very close to the house on the left side, and I think that individual has a fence or a fence and a vine growing up on it, I don't see much of a sight line. And going to the right where the road takes a dramatic curve, this is, I think, we need to have these numbers sooner rather than later to start to make some decisions with regard to this. Do we know what the plan is for that?
Absolutely.
And I obviously know you got to do some speed studies, but we need to know this answer.
And I would reiterate that. I agree. We received additional comments regarding traffic, particularly with regard to the sightlines on Monday. Green International had done some additional work, is going to do additional speed testing. We also have the letter from the police chief that also identified the site driveway as a concern. And given some of the comments that we got from the board at the outset, you know, we really do want to put together a comprehensive package on that. We're going to show correct heights, sight stopping, or intersection sight distance and stopping distance, and confirm all of those. So we'll continue to check those off the list. I think clearly that's something that is of concern, so we want to be able to put on a comprehensive response to that. And you're right, sooner rather than later, so.
I'll ask the-
I know, I think there were some additional things. So I think we'll defer it for tonight, and then, no, I think we'll hold off for tonight, and then, because there were a lot of, there were a couple moving pieces to it. So we want to make sure, and we heard some additional information from one of the neighbors as well regarding that orientation, so.
Can I ask, I'll ask Bill to ban the question.
Preparing a written response? Okay, just on the site entrance? See, I think we want to get in a written response before we do a presentation. So let's just hold off on a presentation for tonight, and I think, you know, we're kind of running out of time as well, but-
If I'm correct, the driveway may, it may move, right? It may be, this thing may move from the edge of the property that's on now, right? We don't know yet. That's part of the-
Will we hold off until we have the additional information?
Yeah, in writing, and we'll prepare a response to that May 22nd letter.
So a couple questions for our peer reviewer. Actually, just one comment, I guess, to the applicant. The sight distance profile plan that was provided with the Green rejoinder, if it's possible to give us a larger sheet, it's pretty hard to read that.
Yep, that's one of the things we can do with the more, with the written response.
Yeah, I know you're going to provide an updated plan, right?
Right.
And then on the speed, I thought we already knew what the speed was. I thought we had the 85th percentile speed at 37 miles an hour. Is that-
So what happened was that at the last meeting, what they did was they had explained that the, their speed study was done closer to the school rather than closer to the driveway.
They're going to go back out?
They're going to get more information to be able to support that.
Wants to say something.
The speed study information?
Yes.
I don't think, you know, we want to get everything in writing first, because I haven't, but as far as the speed study, can you confirm the 85th percentile at least?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jason Sobel. I'm with Green International. We're the traffic engineering consultant on this project. And we had, as I think the town's peer reviewer mentioned, a helpful and collaborative conference call a couple days ago, and in that time, we've collected some additional data and revised some plans. We haven't yet had time to issue a formal response to these comments, which we first saw a little over 24 hours ago. That said, we have done some additional speed tests, speed runs through the area to get a better understanding of the travel speeds in the vicinity of the site driveway, which is closer to the town center area than the speeds were initially measured north of the site drive. As was just mentioned, the 85th percentile speeds north of the site drive were about 37 miles an hour, and what we've measured in the last day or so is 30, an average of 31 miles per hour southbound and an average of 26 miles per hour northbound. And that's sort of consistent with our expectations in regards to, as folks are slowing down as they approach the town center, and the site driveway's a couple hundred feet north of the roadway, the railway, rather, and folks haven't yet fully accelerated into the faster speed zone north of the site. So those speeds that we've found and measured now are sort of consistent with our expectations, just in our knowledge of the area.
Is average the same as 85th percentile?
No, it's not.
You said that the average speeds were that. Is that-
Right.
How does that translate to the 85th percentile?
So, you know, statistics, 85th percentile speed is defined as the speed at or below which 85% of the cars are traveling. The data that we've collected in the past couple of days are based on the floating car methodology and travel time runs, essentially, and is a little less comprehensive than the ATR data that we collected farther north of the site.
So we're going to continue to collect data on that. I think generally what we're finding with our preliminary speed runs in response to that peer review is that the speeds are slower as you approach the village, which would give us more room for our sight distances. So we'll confirm exactly, you know, what those numbers are as far as the 85th percentile, and I think it's important to, you know, have a chance to respond in writing.
Absolutely. We've also, in the past couple days, have revised the sight distance plan in conjunction with Outback Engineering. And if the board is interested in seeing that revised plan, certainly it will be submitted back to the town and the peer reviewer for the full review. But we do have it here, and we can discuss it tonight if the board would like.
Chris, did you have a question? I had a question. How do you, when you do your analysis, you do it the last couple of days, I mean, May, this month, and the end of April is Little League season. So the traffic going in to the schools by the Grange is much greater than it is any other time during the year in Norfolk. So the traffic is traditionally slower, but this is only for a two-month, month and a half period of the year. In summer, we don't have baseball. We don't have summer football. In the fall, we don't have baseball. In the winter, we don't have baseball. So the traffic speed is much greater 10 months out of the year than it is the two-month period that we have Little League, because Little League, if you look at the parking lots, they're all filled over at the Freeman Kennedy School for only that two-month period. And I walk that school every day, twice a day, so I can actually tell you how many lots in that school are filled up all year long. And I walk in the morning and I walk in at night. How does your analysis take into account this phenomena, which I'll call Little League, that doesn't exist 10 months out of the year?
I certainly understand the point you're making. The driveway to the school is farther north of the site, sort of in the vicinity of where we measured our original speeds, and the roadway is a little bit different character up in that area than it is in the area of the site drive near the railroad tracks here.
But there is, there is an acceleration. I mean, if I own, if everybody owned Teslas, I know it would be 2.6 seconds for 60 miles an hour, but they don't. So there is a, there is a period of acceleration, and obviously, if cars are stopping to enter or exit that school at this new driveway, it's certainly going to affect, I think, your speed limits. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned at. And I just, do you take that into account, or is that something that does not take, be taken into account? And how do we, how do we overcome that?
Well, we've been in discussions with town staff in regards to additional measures to raise the awareness of the lower speed limit in the area of the town center, additional signage and things of that nature. I don't think we finalized those conversations, but we've had productive conversations.
Al, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you. Ray, is this your last meeting?
No.
You have one more? Thank you. I thought it may be Ray's last meeting, and I was going to say that.
Were you going to pay him a tribute?
I was. I'll save it for the next meeting, maybe. But I thank the board for recommending the reduction in 12 units. I think that's, you know, sitting on this side of the mic, I think that we're all in agreement that we'd like to see that reduction of the 12 units that you recommended. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Howe?
I had a question, jumping back a little bit to the drainage. My name's Devon Howe. I heard a comment that the infiltration rate was not what it was originally calculated to be. And, correct me if I'm wrong, the proposed alternative, because the infiltration rate was actually lower than calculated, fill material is going to be used in place to increase the infiltration rate. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, for the, for the-
What I had stated was, in the locations that Beta had pointed out, we were using a higher infiltration rate based on the fact that, it's easier if I can kind of show it pictorially. Go to the grading sheet. Sheet three, I believe. Go back a couple of sheets. Okay, right here. So I think one of the beds was in this location, and one of them was in this location. So at those two particular locations, the road is at a slope, and the existing grade is at a slope. So we install the beds at a level elevation, and we're actually cutting into the site on one end and filling on the other end. And Beta pointed out that we were, the bottom of the bed would actually be in what we refer to as the B horizon of the soil profile. And so we're going to have to remove that B horizon and get down to the underlying, more permeable soil and replace that with sand. It's a pretty common technique that is done for drainage.
So this, are you using the infiltration rate for the sand that you're putting in place?
The underlying sand, which is below the, that area. The natural existing sand.
Okay, so you're matching the infiltration rate for the natural occurring-
Right.
-soil in that area.
Right.
Okay. I just didn't quite understand that.
How much lateral fill do you have on that roadside? Al, you got to raise your hand. You just can't blurt out a question. You've got a little protocol. You got to use it. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. You didn't raise your hand. One finger or two. Right back at you. At the lateral, outside that digout for the drainage, how much fill is being put outside that, and what's holding the water? Is there a retaining wall at that point that you were describing a second ago?
Not at the locations that we're talking about, no. No retaining walls.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, no other concerns from the board, why don't we take out our calendars and get the work sheet set up for next week? Fisher, what do you got? What's your calendar look like? Ray, what do we got? When's a good day to get together?
You're gone. You're going away. You're going away. We're saying who's going from the board.
You're gone?
I'm gone.
You're gone, okay. You're going, okay. Any days, area that you can suggest?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, how about Wednesday?
Sorry, what's your...
Is Wednesday good for you gentlemen?
31st.
Tuesday, Wednesday?
Is that the 31st of May?
Should be 31st.
Well, it's Monday. Tell you the 31st.
31st is...
Wednesday.
Let's do this, Monday's a holiday, right?
Right.
Monday's a holiday.
Thursday, because the council can't make it.
Okay, Thursday, Thursday's good.
Do you want lawyers at this meeting, or is it...
What's the date on Thursday? I'm in...
I wasn't planning on coming. Yeah, I agree.
Okay, I'm out of town.
No, seriously, Mike, who do you want there? Is it you and Ray?
Ray, Bill.
Did you say the 3rd, the 30th?
What's, Tuesday, I'm flying out Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm out of pocket Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Oh, so you can, Wednesday doesn't work for you?
Wednesday, yeah, yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, I'm out. Unless we can open up a town hall on Friday. And, yeah, Dan, I think you should be there. You're definitely going to plan to be there, good.
Okay, so you want us there?
Yes.
Okay. So what day are you looking at?
Friday, and then do the following Monday?
June 5th?
All right, we can do the following Monday? Why don't we do the following Monday?
You're out Tuesday, Wednesday, so he only leaves Friday.
Town hall's closed on Friday.
So probably the following Monday.
How about the 5th?
What's, what time are you thinking, though, Mike?
We're here, so you gentlemen are traveling, so what's the distance, what time is...
I can do the afternoon or evening, I can't do, I have a conflict between 10 and 2, but I can do after 2 o'clock.
Okay, so you want to say 3 o'clock?
4 would be better.
Okay.
In that way, we're not hitting bad traffic still, I think it's...
So what's the date?
June 5th.
June 5th?
5th. And it's 4 o'clock?
4 o'clock.
And who's going to be...
Just hang on, go ahead.
Who's going to be attending?
I don't know who Bishop wants from our side, myself, and Dan, and Ray?
And Bill.
And Bill. Whoever you want there. Yes, sir?
Now, my question is, who, this is that meeting you were referring to, the prime meeting, from the ZBA was going to be representing the town?
Myself, Bill, Dan, and Ray.
And that meeting is going to take place, when was it, June 5th?
June 5th, 4 o'clock.
Thank you.
Are we, Mr. Chairman, are we going to set up the next hearing now, or...
Yes.
You have to continue to...
We actually have the next hearing set up.
Yeah, we already have it set up, we have a date already established, Fisher, which is 6:21, 6:21. Next ZBA meeting?
6:21.
Looks like 7:19, Mike, come look at this.
7:19? What is that?
6:21, I'm sorry.
6:21. 6:21.
We have a time yet, Amy, for the hearing?
There's nothing else that day, you want to do 7:15?
7:15, Fisher.
Do we schedule something?
7... Okay, so has everyone got that in their calendars?
Has there been another meeting scheduled after that, as far, if we could look farther ahead if there is one already? If not, then no problem, we can schedule it later, but if there's already been a meeting scheduled, I'd like to get on the calendar.
7:5?
No, 7, I thought we were going back and forth between...
Oh, 7:9, excuse me, 7:5 is the other, 7:19?
7:18.
7:18.
Okay. We're doing the last one, 7.
Then 8:16.
Yeah, I'm a little slow, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think we've concluded our business for tonight regarding this project.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, have to make a motion for the next hearing.
Continue.
To continue the public hearing, 4/25 Rockwood Road, Village in Norfolk, to 6:21:17 at 7:15 PM, to discuss traffic analysis, underlying engineering studies, and landscaping, and any new business from the working session.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, all right. Good night. All right, let's take a peek at our minutes, get those approved. Because we love you. Because we love you. I had to reprimand you, but everyone else got the message, Al. I love you.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, guys. I'm trying to read this early, I'm seeing anything wrong with it. I'm trying to read this early.
What do we have for minutes, April 19?
April 19.
I don't know if that's your image, I don't know what you're trying to do.
You voted, okay.
I know, but she has... No, you have you as president, you've corrected that.
Yes, I correct it, but if you want to sit on it, then I would do that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Don was, we found that, yeah, an error.
Do we have to correct that?
We already did.
Yeah, because he came in late. There was something sneaky about you last time.
No, it was just there from a previous time.
From a previous time, it wasn't there.
Have a good ride home.
Thank you.
When's the next, when's the...
6:7, oh yeah, you should do that, 6:7, yeah.
Oh, that'll be good.
That's going to be a full house.
You may be moving to the elementary school.
Good night.
Didn't know we all go that far.
See, next time, we're going to have the 21st is going to be the next one for this.
Great.
I've got a clock up at night, but I might go have someone else cover that one, help me with this.
Okay, all right. All right, Dan, have a good night.
Good night, Dan.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review these minutes?
Yes. Amy, have you corrected the Don Hanson? There is a little wordsmithing I think you have to do. I'm going to get my copy, which I don't have, great. Which page is that?
Did you correct where Betsy says, Betsy has an area where she basically just said blah, 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 she doesn't give any information, did you, trying to see where it was?
No, I don't know what that is.
Okay, she's got Al Quigley area, Mr. Q, yeah, I mean, there's some, like on page 4 or 6, she's got Mr. Q expressed concerns with units under Al Quigley area owner of 194, third line, Mr. Q expressed concerns with units.
Yeah? Oh, 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 oh.
Should be Mr. Quigley area.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, that's me, I did that.
Yeah, then almost the second to last line, the same paragraph, she's got case study in the M matter of New York, should be the matter of New York.
Okay.
There, I apologize, and I didn't bring my, I didn't bring my version, but there was a couple of other, just to look, just take one more little bit of wordsmithing, it goes back from the current tense to the past tense to the future tense in some areas.
Okay.
And if you want, I'll give you my copy tomorrow, I'll send it over to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because I got a couple of things on there. But that was, it was all just grammatical, nothing in content.
Did you pick up the, I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't hear you, but did you pick up the, there's a typo there, it's Mr. Q.
Yes.
Yeah, just mentioned that.
Mr. Q, who has sensitive ears.
Mr. Q.
Well, you could establish that it's going to be his code name for the rest of us.
Yes. How about just Q?
Just Q.
Bond.
Yes.
James Bond.
James Q.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the April 19, 2017 ZBA meetings as amended.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to adjourn? Oh, wait a minute, before we adjourn, I don't know if a site walk's necessary for that variance, I mean, I'm not going to go, because I've been by and looked at it.
Yeah, we have a layout, I'm not quite sure, like, do you body houses? We don't have any information on that.
It might be, I mean, it might be a valuable exercise to have a site walk. We can do it independently, or we can do it together, or do it as a board, I'm just traveling a lot, so I know.
Well, if we just pass by, will we see everything we want to see in terms of the house? They're going to come back with a survey anyway, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So all we need to do is just take a look from the curb, and we can see the houses on both sides?
Yeah.
We don't really see what's behind, it's probably just empty, right?
Right.
Okay, and I know he bought the adjoining land.
Right.
All right, so I can pass by my own, I don't need to schedule...
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Sure.
Individual. What?
Curb read. No, we're going to get the survey of the actual distances, though, right?
But we'll get a view.
Right, exactly, but then we'll be backed up by the numbers, which is what you, you know, asked for.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the zoning Board of Appeals meeting April 24th at 9:47 PM.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.